So just for everybody's information, if you're speaking as a guest, this will be the chair where you speak. The owl is right there and can capture your face and all your crazy gestures and whatever. So anyway, well, this will be an experiment, that's for sure. Well, welcome to everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, August 9th. And at this point in time, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Absolutely, yeah. So before we get to the rest of our agenda, because today is primary election day, and the commissioners' room is being used for the primary, and we are here in the courtroom. So we appreciate the fact that we have another venue in which to meet that is so nice and comfortable. But things will proceed in a little bit different fashion today, so we just need to roll. All right, are there any adjustments to today's agenda? Adjustments? And you're seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Stollson. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, public comment. We have no one here in the courtroom for public comment. Does anyone have emails that they have received or anything to be read? All right, we will proceed then with our consent agenda items. Are there any items the commissioner would like to pull from the consent agenda? Poll or discuss? All right.
Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
All support.
Thank you, Commissioner Stollson. We have a motion of support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, we're going to have a discussion from the maintenance department. We'd like Brian Silas to come forward. Welcome, Brian. Glad you could be with us this morning.
So I'm here to discuss the bridge over at the center to talk about the putting on the metal roof over there.
Right.
I checked a few options, and I think the metal would be the best to keep people compliant up there. And I checked with three different people, and I have one quote only, and that's from J.J. Willis' friend. And that's for $5,880.
I would just like to thank you for making that remark about a metal roof. As a former school educator, I thought about that.
Oh, really?
I know that there have been some kids on other roofs. I was doing 66, and that metal certainly, it can be hot, and it's slippery, and it's not conducive to that. So appreciate your thoughts on that.
Yes, we had damage done to the pavilion a couple of years ago from the kids climbing up there.
Right.
Jumping on them, so I think this is their best option.
Absolutely.
And it should last a long time.
Yeah.
And that roof should last a long time, and it's good.
Well, it's been a wonderful collaborative project with North House and, you know, involving the school. And the bid, although we got one bid, I have been working on a metal roof on some property that my family owns. And it's coming right in alignment with what we have to pay, and it's about the same size for the structure, so.
That's good to know.
Any other comments or questions, Brian? Commissioner, do we have a timeline of when this is going to be done, and how long is it?
No, he wanted to get started on it yet this month, and it should only take just a few days maybe, two or five days, depending on the weather. So hopefully, we'll get it done soon.
Other questions or discussion? Now, I guarantee motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Stollson. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
You too, as well. All right, move on to item five, our highway department agenda. We have a couple items there, and Riley Gass is here. For some explanations. Good morning, Riley.
Good morning, everybody. Explain yourself. We're in court. Yeah.
I don't swear.
No, what do we have first? Our sand pile bid. This is an interesting one. The past few years, we've only gotten one bid. It's been Isaac Hansen's. I had to go back to 2019. We had two bids. 2018, we had three bids. And so, you know, we've done some looking too, and as we're all aware of living up here, what we deal with a lot and so much cost of the material, getting it here. And so there were some places that we found, I think down in the luth, where the sand itself was very cheap. Trucking all of it up here is what just made it kind of out of the question. I think it's something we're going to keep looking into. Obviously, having one bidder over and over and over is good. We love working with Isaac Hansen's, though. I don't want to throw any, there's nothing wrong with that. They're wonderful to work with. But I think, you know, just making sure we're exploring all of our options. In this case, obviously, fuel cost is what raised us quite a bit over what we normally do. Additionally, we're doing two locations of our sand pile this year. Normally, we just have the one location at the MinDOT facility just east of town. As we've talked about, other kind of related thing, the salt sand shed. MinDOT's doing some construction on their site, so they think we can fit maybe half of our pile there. And the other half is going to have to sit on our campus. And so just having the two different locations can affect that. You know, looking back at it as well, I mean, we haven't changed our dollar amount in our budget for sand since 2018. And so I think, you know, that's something to, if either fuel is going to stay what it is, that's something we're going to have to address in the future. Or, you know, maybe it goes back down in the dollar amount we have in our budget, okay? Related to it as well, our self-budget, we historically come in far less, you know, typically about half of what we have budgeted. And so, you know, those two are kind of together. Anywho's, I didn't know if anybody had any questions.
Commissioner Starley, thank you. So they're willing to let us store there for a while because my understanding was they don't want us there at all?
Correct, yes. And so we worked with them, and that was what we started with. We wanted to start with, let's get out of there by, you know, by this next winter, so then they can do their construction, and we're just out of there. Obviously, what we saw with our bids and our salt sand shed, you know, things came in. Plans change. And so the nice thing is, is MinDOT's always been great to work with, and I knew that going into this. And so the fact that we could at least do some of our pile there, we very appreciate it, so.
Right, good. Thank you. Other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion to award the contract. Thank you, Commissioner Starley.
All support.
Thank you much, Commissioner Stollson. So we have a motion and support. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
What do we have next? Crack ceiling. So we probably just talked about this a few weeks ago. That's how fast it goes. Nothing changed. It's what we had discussed initially. It's what we ordered. That's what we'd like to be as our kind of first and final. Normally, payments are kind of due one month because the project only took a week. For a refresher, this was all kind of the new pavement that we've had up here, so South Shore Drive, the Gunflint Trail, from Tropical Road to Pine Mountain Road, the pavement up on 17, and what am I forgetting? I think that might have been it. Yeah. But no, they did a wonderful job. They're great. I think they were new to the area. This project, if I remember right, I think it has four bidders to it, three or four, something like that, basically. So it was nice to see a wide range, a lot of interest in it, and it's something we're going to obviously continue doing. It's good preventative maintenance on new pavement, so. Any questions?
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Robbie. I don't have a question, but I just wanted to share that, you know, I'm hunting for blueberries and saw them at work on Gunflint Trail, and it was a very smooth operation. I was really impressed with how they're managing traffic and how they're just laying it down and getting it down, so. That was it.
That's good to hear.
Did you find blueberries?
Oh.
That's what I wanted to know.
Where's the secret spot?
Where nobody goes at the seal guard station.
Commissioner Stollson?
I would make the motion until the work is complete and approved, Ben.
Right, is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Appreciate all you do for us. And item six on our agenda this morning is human resources. There's been a long ways to come down.
Good morning, Lee. Good morning. All right. Well, thank you very much for meeting with me. I'm here this morning on behalf of the working group, talking about our market analysis and benchmark studies. The working group consists of a number of different members. I've listed their rate out also in your packet. We met approximately six or seven times to discuss strategies and ways that we wanted to see our benchmark communities for our market analysis. So I'm here to ask for approval for those, for David Brown to continue on their market analysis using those counties I laid out.
If you'd like.
Yeah. Okay. So it's Lake of the Woods County, Scott County, Olmsted County, Ramsey County, Washington County, Penopan County, Beltrami County, Cass County, Lake County, Goodhue County, Sherburne County, Dakota County, Anoka County, Becker County, Harbor County, Otter Tail County, Freeborn County, Aitken County, Crow Wing County, and St. Louis County.
We have some counties all over the state.
We do. It was a nice wide range, both geography, population.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I was going to just give a little overview of our process if that's helpful. We basically, so the reason we're doing this is because, well, it's best, it's good practice. Every three to five years, you should do this. And it's been five years, so we're right at the end of best practice. Last go around, and this is something we learned through negotiations. Employees had concerns about the previous process and the lack of involvement. Originally, they were pretty involved, and then not so much after that initial involvement. And because of that, and perhaps other reasons as well, but there was maybe a lack of confidence in the study from a lot of employees. And so that was identified through negotiations, and I'm very grateful for Mr. York for picking up on that as well and recognizing how important it is to have the confidence of employees in this process and all process throughout the organization. So I really appreciate his willingness to reach out and to really gather as much feedback as possible. So we kind of started from scratch. We didn't use, we didn't even look at the last study. We just started with a blank slate. Starting with all 87 counties, and then we asked our group, what makes Cook County unique? And what factors in our community can we relate to other communities? And that's how we're trying to do those comparisons. DDA had had a list of comparables from their perspective. And our group decided that we wanted to come up with our own benchmarks because we know our community, you know, more than, you know, consultant and plenty of, plenty of different factors that are strong. And so I forget how many different factors. The first bid was just a brainstorming session. So everything under the sign, anyone thought, was relative to our community that we could use as a comparison. Sometimes the data points were not easily available with other communities, something that was just really hard to compare or impossible. And then other times, it was kind of redundant, and so we tried to consolidate and just get a good, clear list of factors. And those are listed towards the end of the packet here, or the DDA thing. Those five factors, I think we got it down to, oh, I don't remember, 20, and then 10, and then eight, and then five, just because we didn't want too many factors. It would just make everything messy. And those five factors are median home value, median household income, expenditures per population, rental rates, and then hospitality tax to population. And so those are things that the group felt made our community what it is. And the challenges and both the opportunities that it provides, intangible data points. Expenditures to population, you know, some of the comparisons were recommended just to do expenditures just straight up. And we thought that that was important. Expenditures are important because it tells a bit about your organization, operations, and just what's all involved. But we thought it was more relevant to have it as a ratio to population because that really shows the burden on taxpayers. And we thought that was important to understand and compare with. Also, because tourism is such an important factor in our community, hospitality tax is a data point to try to measure that tourism. But again, we thought it was more relevant per population because it shows just, you know, the strain on residents and the services that our community needs to provide. I think Sister Thompson often brought up, you know, Bloomington as an example. And that has, you know, huge tourism dollars because of Mall of America and whatever else down there. And so it's a little out of our league, but when you compare that to our population, to the tourism dollars, I could bring things a little bit closer to try to better understand where we lie. So then we also tried to weight those factors because we thought that some of them were more important with what challenges it really brought to light, median home value. Housing is our community's biggest challenge, and so median home value makes sense there. I think DDA's original comparables were, I think, five counties. And that's pretty narrow. And it's great if you can find five counties that are very similar to you. Applying these benchmarks, we narrowed it down from all 87 down to like 53, and then down to 26 or something. And we didn't know how far we should or could narrow it. We got down to 20 and thought, okay, this is, we don't want to start weeding too many of these out because when you have a small number of comparables, each of the comparables has a bigger weight. And so you can see Hennepin County is in there. You could argue that's not much like a county, but as you can see, there are elements that are like that. But I don't think we can necessarily afford to pay what Hennepin County pays. You both see how the numbers lie, but I'm skeptical of that. But when you take all 20 of the comparable counties, the weight of Hennepin County's wages aren't as strong. And so it's still been affected, but not as much. And similarly, with maybe lower paid counties. I'm familiar with, well, anecdotal figures. Aitken County's wages are not that high. And so there could be concerns from staff that they know that as well, that this is going to sway things to low sort of thing. So getting that spread of all 20 really makes hopefully things even out. And we're not going to know what happens here until we do the market analysis or the degree or whatever. So that was a bit of the process. Lots of, as Leah said, there was six or seven meetings, a lot of conversation. I could see Tessa was wonderful to work with, very patient, and we could, I could also see that this isn't normal. She said that. This is the first and only time that we've gone above things this way.
We're kind of high maintenance.
Yeah. We didn't make it easy for her, but she was very accommodating and could explain things. And we had to dehash things a number of different times and adjust, and we had back and forths and explained each person's reasoning, and then that might change some lines, and then have more back and forth, and it was, it kind of went on and on in loops. But because of that, I feel very confident across us, and I believe the staff involved do as well. But, you know, it's a little bit out of our wheel. We don't do this, you know. So we were really relying on the consultants and then trying to use our best judgment to identify what makes our community unique and then just to try to get on the same page. And that's the long and short, that I missed the all-staff meeting, so I can't really report on that, but I trust you guys again and will.
Yeah, and so thinking back on that, we did have an all-staff meeting on August 1st to share the work to date with all of our staff. Had probably 30 people joining online and another 15, 20 in the room. And then we did video record that meeting so that folks who couldn't attend could watch it after the fact. Had a lot of good questions. Didn't have any, was no real point of contention in terms of the approach that the working group had taken. The other thing to mention or to emphasize is that when we started discussions with the working group, we weren't all on the same page. We had a lot of different perspectives. And that's kind of why it took six or seven meetings to get to a place where we all could agree on the final standards or benchmarks that we're using. So just want to thank again the folks who are part of that working group. They've done a lot of work, a lot of good thinking about how best to approach this. I feel like we're in a really good place to do the next phase of the work, and I'm really eager and a little bit apprehensive to see what we find out.
Yeah, I think everyone is.
And when we do get those comps back, this board will have a decision to make about, you know, given the data that we've collected, where do we want to lie in relation to our fair counts? That's really where the rubber hits the road, so. But good work today. Really glad, glad to get the help that we're getting from DDA. Tessa's done a great job for us. And excited to move on to the next phase.
Any questions or remarks? Commissioner Hawkins? Can I actually add questions?
I was hoping for more at the all-staff meeting.
Yeah, me too.
There wasn't a whole lot. I really appreciate the ones that were there, the questions.
So I would like to get more perspective on the lodging tax because, my personal opinion, that's not going to be a good comparable with other counties when you look at, okay, are we taking our total lodging tax for Cook County when some districts are 3% and some 1%? And other counties, they can be used for things that maybe would come out of our levy that we don't get to do. And especially like the bigger cities, they have one tax where if you have less than 50 rooms, and another tax, you have more than 50 rooms. How are we going to make sure that that's comparable? And I think, what year are we going to do now in the cities with the conventions or with the pandemic? Yeah, I'm guessing their hospitality tax is way down. Ours was way up. That's not going to continue. I don't, we see that in our reports. So how are we going, to me, hospitality tax does not show a room to taxpayers because of tourism.
Well, we already did the hospitality. We're not going to do it again, you know, and I don't know how Tessa came up with that. No, as far as.
But that's what I'm saying. I'm going to doubt that comparable. So do you have, I guess, I will, we may never get to make this one. How they came up with that number in there? When they, when you say Hennepin County, are they coming every city? Like, what's a different lodging tax and Hennepin County's number?
The counties, the counties question of lodging tax.
But like St. Louis County, Luth collects their own, and that's my understanding. I don't know if that's true. Has their lodging tax, St. Louis County has their, does it all get added together?
And those details are really good for the discussion and good questions. Unfortunately, we have to draw a line somewhere, and the group thought that this was going to give us the best, the best measurement of tourism. It's not that it's the perfect measure of tourism.
But I think it's going to be a fraught measurement if you don't include everything and say, okay, you get to charge 6%, well, depending where you're at, 4% here and then plus a 2% here. We only get to do this here. And basing it on population, I mean, you've got to make sure that you're comparing, you're not comparing apples to oranges.
Sure. I guess I'm wondering, what, so I understand, I think I understand your concern, that there are different lodging taxes throughout the state, right?
And they get to use differently.
And they can be used differently. There are different lodging tests in state, and they can be used differently. What this group was trying to do was identify which counties have a high amount of visitors and a high amount of tourism because it's such a part of this community, that that was a factor that can compare with other counties. It's not that it's the apples to apples comparison. It's just trying to get, what other counties per capita have a lot of tourism?
And how does that affect our wages that we pay as a county?
Because of the services, well, my take on it was that because of the desirability of a county, because of its, it's a destination, a high tourist place, that's a huge factor in home prices. And there's a lot.
Home prices. Now, that one I can get behind. But there's a different way to find that.
Sure.
Besides lodging tax.
Yeah, so that's a way to define, but I saw a little redundancy there. But again, the group felt that that, that method is going to give us our best. So when you go back up to the list of counties, let's see here. It would be ahead of the final benchmark communities. This page here. You can go through and see which counties had that comparable, that fact that that benchmark has a comparable.
The majority are large towns.
Yeah, there's Lake of the Woods, Scott County, Olmsted County, Ramsey County, Washington County, Penopan County, Harbor County, Cass County, Lake County, those all, let's see, Beltrami County, Becker County, oh, no, Crow Wing County, and then St. Louis County, actually. Although I should note, St. Louis County fell off of our list with the sheer number of indicators, but we thought that it was close enough, and we had people even Cook County to go to like St. Louis County that should be a spot, like community, that was a term that DDA recommended, just in case there was a county you thought. Um, just in case there was a county you thought, well, the factors don't match, but we should still use that. That was St. Louis County, just so you know. But all of those counties have that same hospitality tax to population ratio, um.
And do we know what year we're comparing? Just that will make a difference.
No, we don't, yeah.
And excuse your numbers.
Well, yeah, yeah, but we're not looking for, um, you know, the exact. We're just looking for something to compare on. And so what, what you're saying is you don't think that tourism is a, a good comparable for us to compare to other counties to, to identify what, what makes comparable?
Not hospitality tax. Now, you wanna talk about the, the number of homes in Cook County related to population and the ones that are used year round and the ones that are seasonal? Yeah, there's a difference there. That, to me, that gives a better indicator of how many homes do we have in Cook County? It drives up the price.
Sure, yeah, and.
It'd be a tricky number, I think, to find in other counties.
That's, yeah, that was, yeah, because that was discussed. And, and yeah, it was not as, uh, as, as you may or as I think you know, um, Cook County is, is kind of leader in, in that short-term rental ordinance and really tracking that. There are other counties that do it as well and maybe a little bit after us. But um, it's not as wide a spread of a number. So some of the data points are really hard. And again, with the lodging tax, those data points are also hard because like you said, it's not necessarily apples to apples. There's different taxes, but it just gives us something to go on to try to compare and, and uh, yeah, I don't know, I um, it wasn't, uh, well, I can't remember if it's in my top, top picks. But, but I, you know, was willing to, to go with what the group decided and, and um, I think, I think it's still a good comparable. Um, and this list has enough diversity that it's, you know, there's some, there's some heavy hitters there, but there's also some light hitters. So I think it'll give us an interesting picture and who knows what it'll be. But I guess also it should note, we weren't trying to approach this with a specific end in mind. We were trying to approach this to find out where things land and then maybe the decision. Because we as a board will have to make that decision. If, if this shows that everything is like two hundred percent of, a hundred and fifty percent of what we pay, we're not just gonna take that on. We're gonna say, okay, well, that's, that's interesting. Um, maybe this, maybe this list wasn't uh, as helpful. But, but it gives us something to go on and, and really, um, what I would like to lean on is just the, the process with staff and administration coming together and, and agreeing on, on this. But um, I'm sorry, that you don't agree.
Yeah, I, you know, I, Commissioner Hawkins, I, I appreciate your, your perspective that there, you know, you have questions about everything. Um, I think if, if we were each individually tasked with setting the criteria that we use to select comparable counties, we would each come up with a different set of criteria. This, the, the point of this process was to develop consensus around some criteria. We did that based on our, our experience from the last time when it was not a group of people, when it was primarily led by one or two people, is my understanding. That's what we're trying to avoid this time. And so that's why we had this process. And uh, the uh, you know, the criterion that you're talking about, it was not at the top of my list either. But I'm, I'm invested in what the group has chosen. I think it's, I think it's the best path forward for the building support organization-wide or the outcome of the study. Um, and so I, you know, I think, I feel very comfortable moving forward. And, and I wish that we could all be in complete agreement that these are exactly the right criteria to use. That's another thing. And there's also, it, it sounds to me in the questions you're asking, it sounds like you're seeking a degree of precision that would probably be impossible to achieve. You know, this is a twenty thousand dollar project. And if we wanted to really dive deep into the numbers and get the kind of detail that you're describing, um, it'd be only a thousand dollar project. So, you know, we're, we're doing what we can do. I think the process is very sound. Um, I think we do have good buying from staff today, which is super, super important.
Thank you. Um, when I looked over the cities, um, I guess I agree with the balance. There are smaller counties involved here. But whether it be sales tax, whether it be the number of homes, whether it be all the criteria, what about wages? Have you looked into uh, data of wages in Hennepin County versus Katz County versus Cook County? Isn't that the goal of this anyway, is to kind of smooth out the wages in Cook County? Yeah?
That's terrific, thank you, Commissioner Storley. Um, no, we have not, because that is the goal. If you say, what are comparables? And then you just find the counties that have the same wages, that doesn't tell you. What we're trying to do is find counties that have uh, similar attributes and compare our wages to what their wages are. And then potentially adjust how, how things are, um, to stay competitive and to um, have, have our employees feel valued and, and um.
So that is the end result.
That is what we're, that is what we're aiming for, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, great conversation. I get the sense the community or our community of, of people in this group were trying to look at what drives our economy. And this is a tourism economy. So I, I think you have to find something that you can agree on as a comparable to start to bring you into that realm. You can't compare yourselves to an industrial economy, you wouldn't want to, right? So you have to, you have to find something that is, that brings you life for life or something close to because it has different effects on your overall economy, your home pricing, your foster goods. Of course, you can lay out a whole litmus, right? Because, you know, when you're, when you're at the end of the road, you have that factor. You have a lot of different things that come into this. But I, I got that sense reading through that this was one of those trying to find something that could do this. And as long as you're going through a process, which I would expect DDA, this is what they're known for, is normalizing that to, to the degree that they can to try to make these actual comparable counties. You know, and, and when you do that through the number versus the population and this type of thing, you can start to normalize that so that our smaller community, you can do some level of comparison. And, and so I guess that's where I landed when I went through it, because I looked at several of them and I was kind of like, hmm. And I looked at the waiting factors and I was like, hmm, okay. You know, but yeah, I, I mean, in the end, when you look at it, what's most important is that the group came to this with some guidance and coaching from the DDA folks. And in the end, everybody felt heard and you, you felt like this was a lot of representative that you were wanting to come up with for this exercise. And that's where, in the end, I just kind of went back and said, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna believe the process is working and we're getting the right counsel from our, you know, consultants and uh, and we'll see what we come up with for a number in the end, you know? Because like you, I don't know, I mean, it was easy when I did these in an industry where it was so unique that you, it was pretty doggone apples to apples. And, and a few things that were outside, you could, you could adjust for them. So trying to do it, because I got myself out of that mindset and tried to put it in this context. And it's like, yeah, this would be hard. This is a lot, this is a lot harder than what I had done in the past because there are just so many variables and it's so hard. Because like you said, you can't start off with, well, they're a small county, what do they pay? Yeah, they're a small county, but do they have the tourism? Do they have this, 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 you know, I don't know. So, yeah, I, I really applaud the group spending the time. If nothing else, that exercise is so important to start to build that understanding and relationship to be able to make decisions on these types of things. There's value in that, you know? And so I think that's a key piece of this. And we're just gonna have to wait and see. I don't think anybody is totally comfortable with, when you look at the list, you're like, okay. Some of these just that they got, oh, they're like, okay, sure. And some of them, you're like, you know, when you say Hennepin County, St. Louis, you're like, what? So, but in the end, you're gonna look at them, you're gonna take averages and you'll do the standard thing for all the highest, for all the lowest, to see where you end up. And then you'll say, okay, so now that we see that, what do we think? These aren't comparable, you know? It'll make us have a further conversation, no question about that.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on something James said about um, just, I don't know if the hundred thousand dollar number is accurate for, for us. But, but, but it would have been more, much more expensive. And I don't know that this is necessarily relevant to this conversation. I just wanna point out, we, we really pushed uh, the edge of the twenty thousand dollars. I mean, I think we probably stepped over that um, for the, what we were expecting around the number of meetings and the backs and forths and, you know, so. But yeah, we, and we, we, we did wanna go further. We, the whole group wanted more, but we had to realize, okay, this is our limits here and this, we're just trying to get in, kind of like Commissioner Storley said, trying to get a picture here. Um, so I felt embarrassed at times just because I knew how many meetings we would have and what we were gonna be paying or what we had agreed to, so.
Other questions or remarks? Yeah, actually, I, I have a couple more questions, just trying to understand the process. And I appreciate the other perspective. I just, as Commissioner, wanting to make sure that we, our twenty thousand dollars gives us a report that I feel good about. I understand, I'm really glad that the committee came up with something. But when I saw hospitality tax, number one, it's like, hmm, I don't personally believe that's the best metric to use.
That's the nope. It is the lowest wage, that's the lowest wage.
Good, good. I'm glad you hear that. But so, and then our list of counties. Are we just looking at county wages or are we looking at city wages? Are we looking at private sector wages?
We're, we're looking, we're looking at county wages for, for the counties in the study. We're also looking at local wages, to the extent that we can get information about what local employers are paying because we know that we're competing against the private sector here in Cook County. So that's, that's really important. Getting private sector information from those other counties would be very difficult, if not impossible. Because that's just not information that they have to share.
Well, and probably not a good comparable either, you know, when you start talking about free outlook and all of that.
But definitely local employers, that's, that's really important.
Well, and one of the things I was saying, because I just read an article in the paper that five Pennebun County employees just resigning on, hmm, they're going somewhere in other counties, some are going to private sector, it made me think, well, what, you know, is this gonna give us? That was my only reason for asking that.
And there, there are a lot of reasons why people resign.
Right, and makes me think of our turnover and we had quite a bit and where did they go? And, you know, we only compare to other counties and not figure out how they, did some of our employees go to other counties or did they go to the private sector? And if our goal is to keep employees because of wages, that was my just concern, what I wanted to know.
We did, or, yeah, I'd say we did have a conversation about remote work because that was one thing that we're, you know, how do we, that is where some of our, you know, some places that resign that time, instead of being able to work in different sectors remotely, which really opens that door. Unfortunately, or fortunately. But it wouldn't, you know, how do we measure the remote work industry? I mean, that was something that's still relatively new. We're hoping that even just looking at the private sector here in the county can help. Hopefully the rest of them.
My, my next question. Out of our, all of our job descriptions and qualifications, which ones are we going to be compared to? Is that decision gonna be made? All, okay, listen, you know, it's really, usually it's about thirty percent of here.
We're.
Every job description.
Every job description that they can find comparables to. I know when I do job studies, sometimes I can't find the exact matching job that some other county has. You know, we don't have everything that St. Louis County has. Um, I'm hoping us being smaller, we'll really be able to find all of them.
And I think this is my last one. Are we comparing base pay plus benefits?
Hmm, we are not looking at benefits.
Oh, that's, that's kind of huge, isn't it?
Um, yeah, but the, I mean, the hourly information is more readily available. And so again, I mean, we're running up against the limits of what we can do. Um, your point's well made, Commissioner. It'd be really interesting and useful to look at the full compensation package.
Yeah.
Um, but that information's not that good.
What you would think from other counties, it would be. I mean, every county should know what their benefits are.
We're, I mean, we're using the data that David runs, it's, it has that. And I don't believe they have full knowledge of this, I think they just have.
We can, we can ask more about that.
I think that's extremely important to make sure.
I agree, if we could do that, we should.
Yeah, for sure, yeah, that gives them more confidence, look.
But it's also.
I feel like those are almost two separate studies too. You know, we're looking at base wage and then also, you know, and.
Well, we could do another study.
I mean, it would be really kind of complicated, I mean, because there'd be so many variables, currents of sign. Value, like.
Family versus.
Family versus individual and how many, how many people have individual coverage versus family coverage? And is it sponsored by the organization? If you started.
Optional benefits as well, right? Right, yeah, correct, yeah, vision, dental, it depends, yeah.
Well, I think that's a huge plus in Cook County is the um, county's benefit package. I think is very good. Um, I think the community says, well, they have a, may have a low wage, but they have a very good benefits package. Now, we are saying, we're not even gonna compare benefit packages. I can see some pushback.
Right, but good benefits packages do not bring people into court who have jobs the way solid hourly wages do. And I'm not saying it's.
Not for me.
Well, I'm not saying it's not important, and it is for me too. I mean, I, I look at that today's picture too. Um, but when you're competing for votes for entry-level jobs, um, they're typically young folks that come in and you're just like, how, how can I maximize what I'm earning? And you can sell them on, hey, we've got three, three percent or thirty-seven benefits. And, you know, if you start investing now, by the time you retire, you'll be in good shape. But, I mean, people, when they're young, they're just interested in big bills, right? And so that, that solid starting wage is really the thing that brings people into court. But I, but I agree with you. I mean, the, the full compensation package is, if, if we could compare that information, I would, I would strongly argue that is.
We should ask, we should ask if there's an additional cost there or how easy that is. And I think that's, that would be helpful to understand. Maybe, maybe we can't, and, and maybe it's limited, if it gets us a better picture, I think that's important.
I think it's a really valuable discussion. And um, I come back to, what a great process that we have. And thoughtful, cohesive of staff. We have really improved confidence and demonstrated transparency. And I'm really excited that we have gone in that direction and the consensus was reached again. Each of us individually may have chosen different things, but that group came together. Any other comments or questions? Other than your question?
I'll, I'll make a motion. I'm gonna chair to, to accept these uh, comparable counties and, and move on in the process for, for our analysis.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Storley, and we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? I.
I.
Oppose. Tessa's in a, we can count as an I. Motion carries. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. No.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, no, it's a challenging process, but it will be really good for our organization.
I'd agree, I liked how open, I, yeah, after being in the past one, as well, it was wonderful to see this process come forward.
For employees.
And on behalf of the working group.
Have a great day. Right, we will move on to item seven, which is our auditor.
Sure, would you like me to come to the chair?
Um, you know, I think you can stay right there, because the hour is gonna follow you.
So, this, this is about our canvas board, we're in the election today, canvas board, the second, or third day afterwards, and I'm choosing the second day afterwards, so Thursday, and at ten AM, which is standard time, canvas board. The members of the board are the county commissioners, the mayor of the largest city, the core administrator, the auditor, and, uh, any of those can, can have an agent represent them, choose that. So today I'm asking if the board would select one or up to two commissioners, if not, um, if you had someone else, like the name is your agent, or you could authorize with the final.
Well, are there any commissioners that would be interested in participating Thursday, this Thursday, August eleventh, at ten AM?
Madam Chair, I participated last, uh, election, I cannot, this election, I have other committees with meetings. I just wanted to say it's a pretty, pretty smooth process, really appreciate, um, you know, having never done it before, made it very easy for me to understand, and, yeah, it's pretty quick, so. I'm also up for the area on Thursday.
Commissioner Hawkins, Commissioner Stone.
I'm not, and I haven't done it before, and I'm, well, not as many commissioners as employees, so I'm, it's fine, I'll get that, all right, thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, well, that's wonderful.
Yeah, uh, in a primary election, besides canvassing the results, the, the canvas board also selects the date for the post-election review. And that will come, it's, it's approximately two weeks after the election, there's statutory timeline that I'll present to the canvas board. So that's when we actually manually count some of our precincts. So, at the canvas board, at the general election, I'll then make a random selection of precincts. So you'll know until after that, and at least one of them has to have a hundred and fifty, both, so you'll have larger precincts involved. And that's where we actually open up and, uh, and we'll count the state and federal races, yeah, race by race, the publics.
Well, uh, I would like to make a motion then to approve Commissioner Hawkins to be our representative at the canvas board on August eleventh at ten AM.
With support?
We have a motion and support, any further discussion? Commissioner Mills. All in favor?
I.
Oppose, motion carries, thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Thank you, appreciate it. Attorney Hickon.
Item eight. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm gonna leave my mask on unless somebody tells me they can't understand me, um, and I can take it off. Um, so we're here, I'm here today to give the commissioners an update, um, at the request of the county administrator, about an issue with a snowmobile trail in Luton, um, which is part of the state grant in aid, um, snowmobile trail system. Um, we heard, we started hearing from the Luton Trail Breakers Snowmobile Club, um, early this summer or spring, um, through our contact in the auditor's office, Courtney Burner, that they had an issue with a property owner who was contesting the easement that the snowmobile trail has across his land. So, this is a new owner of a parcel that previously had owned by Drury Enterprises, um, who had granted permission for the snowmobile trail. There's also an easement, which was filed and recorded against the property for this trail back in nineteen ninety-three. But, um, the property owner, um, is claiming that the easement is invalid and is asking the county or the snowmobile club or somebody to pay on an annual basis for access across this land. That would be unprecedented, is my understanding, across the county, and we, we think it's not, um, a typical practice anywhere across the state that somebody would, um, be paid annually for access. Um, so it's very important to the snowmobile club, to the, uh, to this network of trails, that this access continue across this parcel. According to the snowmobile club, um, they have inquired, uh, into access across adjoining parcels to try to reroute the trail, and there are no other property owners in the vicinity who are willing to allow access. And this particular access, I'm looking at, when you look at the snowmobile trail map that's, um, published like on the Visit Cook County website, this is the Luton Access Trail, so it gets people from the North Shore State Trail, which goes, kind of parallels the shore all the way up. It brings people down to the Clearview General Shore area, so this is the only access other than the Seacoal Road businesses that people would have, um, to food and water and, and warmth. You know, at a public place, and it is their only access to gas, really, um, in Luton, my understanding. Um, at any rate, it would be a hardship for the club, they certainly don't have funds to pay, um, for easement access. They don't have an attorney that represents them, you know, it's just a small, local, snowmobile trail club. So, I don't have an action item for the commissioners today, uh, and I don't believe it's necessary for us to go into a closed session for attorney client privileged advice at this point, because, um, I don't have an action recommended for you yet. We certainly could go into closed session, but, um, I'm not sure under open meeting law that we should do that, because we can't really identify what the potential litigation would be. But, uh, I wanted to give you this background, because I may be coming back to the commissioners, if it's the county that is gonna be the only entity that needs to, uh, bring this matter to court and clearly define, uh, what the trail access, legal trail access is. I have obtained the opinion of a local real estate attorney about this easement, um, and he believes that easement for the trail is defensible in a court of law. The other things that I'm doing, and the reason I don't have any action for you today is because I'm, uh, I've started conversations last week with, um, the Attorney General's Office and Legal Council for the DNR, inquiring, you know, what does a small county, uh, what kind of assistance can they provide to us if we need to, um, deal with the legal challenge against state trail access? Um, so, you know, Courtney Burner has been in, in communication with our local regional trail supervisor from, um, Two Harbors, and I sent all the background information to a couple attorneys, um, yesterday. So, I, I will come back with more information if you'd like it, um, and I definitely will come back if, if I'm seeking your authority to file a lawsuit on behalf of this trail access. Any question?
Commissioner Solson.
Just, just for continued background, like, with the current landowner claims that the easement was invalid.
Yes.
Basis for claiming invalid easement.
His, uh, his claim is that easement is invalid because it was issued by the Minnesota Trust for Public Land, which was not the owner of the property at the time. Which is the problem, uh, but there are other legal bases on which we could argue that the, uh, trail access should concern them.
Commissioner Stone, um, did you mention you sent a map out? Do we have a map?
I didn't send the map, um, but if you go to Visit Cook County and to the snowmobile map that is on Visit Cook County's website, this is the Luton Access Trail, so to give you an idea of where it is, it runs on a vacant land parcel that is just east of the Mink, Mink.
Mink Ranch.
Mink Ranch Road, thank you, that Mink Ranch Road neighborhood. So there's a vacant land parcel east of there that was owned by Drury, uh, and is now owned by, uh, this new property owner. But if you know where the North Shore State Trail, uh, runs, this is one of the feeder trails onto the North Shore State Trail.
North Shore Trail, like off of the Seacoal Road, that goes under the. Oh, okay.
Right, southern, I think it's, I don't know where exactly, but the purple going from Clearview to North.
Yeah.
Somewhere before the junction, or?
Under, under the car?
Sorry, that's, I live right there.
Yeah, that's right, I saw that Mr. Hale has his property over there, but yeah.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if it's before or after the junction.
It's gotta be, I think it's, yeah, south of it. Do we all go out there?
We'd have to notice immediately.
Yeah, let me just remove, review my notes and see if there's anything else I wanted to tell you about this.
I feel, I feel, I feel confused now, um, about where it is exactly, maybe I don't need to know exactly with this map. I keep zooming in and it switches to a different picture, so I stopped.
I think.
Right now, we're just heads up, right?
Heads up, yeah.
Well, appreciate very much that you brought this to our attention, and certainly it's an interesting legal challenge to the state trail, um, one that would impact us and, um, might impact many other counties and so that as well, so it's a very important thing. And, um, we'll be reviewing maps, I'm sure visiting with you again.
Okay.
Anything further, Commissioner Mills?
Uh, this, we, the Parks and Trails Commission has not discussed this, they've been aware of this, and so I'll, I'll bring it to them and just give them a heads up on what's going on.
Great.
All right, thank you so much. Um, would the group want to take a break? All right, we will move on now.
All right. Good morning, commissioners and members of the public who are going to be watching this after the fact. Uh, the first item that I have today concerns expenditure of the county's American Rest and Plan Act funding. As you'll recall, when we first received this funding, um, about a year plus ago, um, we had a couple of public meetings where we convened stakeholders to talk about the best way to use the ARPA funding to, to best impact the county. And one of the biggest concerns that people expressed was the housing issue. And so, ARPA, um, at the time that a guidance was first issued, um, did include a provision for using the dollars to, for infrastructure related to housing development. And so that would be water and wastewater infrastructure. In April of this year, the US Treasury issued a final guidance on the expenditure of ARPA. And what it did in that final rule was it created, um, basically a ten million dollar cap, where if you receive ten million dollars or less as a local government, you could use that money in a more flexible way. Um, one of the, one of the original categories was revenue, revenue loss. And so governments that had revenue losses related to the pandemic could basically use their ARPA funding to make up for that loss. Um, in the final rule, there was a ten thousand dollar, or two million dollar, um, threshold below which, um, there was a lot more flexibility to spend these dollars. And so, where, where we are right now is we got, um, the, uh, April twenty-second budget revision that the board approved. Uh, we had designated five hundred eighty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars, uh, for housing. And where we are today is, of course, since that decision was made, um, Mr. Jason Hale has started as the executive director of the HRA, um, and is already doing some really great work for us to explore new housing opportunities in the county. Um, and the proposal today is to basically, um, take some that we budgeted for housing and sub-granted or, or designate the HRA as a sub-recipient, uh, so that it can determine the best use of the housing dollars. And, uh, there is, is part of your agenda packet, uh, a letter that Mr. Hale wrote describing some of the things that he would like to do with the funding. Um, and I just think this presents a really great opportunity for the county to really maximize the impact of these dollars. Um, the, the good thing, well, one of the many good things about doing this is that, of course, the HRA's meetings are all public. Um, it has its own ward, which is focused exclusively on housing. Um, and I, and I feel like there's a really good process in place for the county to simply say to the HRA, take this money and do good things. And, and I feel personally very confident in, uh, taking that step. Of course, the decision's not mine, it is yours, um, but, but I think that that would be the best thing we could do with this money. And I would invite, uh, Jason to, to say a few words about some of the things that he's been exploring and how some of these dollars might be used in the year.
Sure, um, good morning. Good morning, for having me. Uh, one of the reasons that I, uh, when I reviewed the allocation that the board had approved in April, one of the things I got thinking about is I've explored some additional funding opportunities. Um, and as Administrator said, the final rule that opened up a lot more opportunities for the funds, so, believe it or not, when the Treasury first came out with ARPA, there was a lot of confusion about, how do we use this, what do we do with this, and they didn't know. Um, and they didn't know until about April. So, um, so it took about a year really for the, uh, part of the Treasury to, to iron out, after just a myriad of questions and complaints, concerns from communities. Okay, here, if you, you know, if you have under ten million dollars, just, here's a whole bunch of things you could do. One of the reasons that I think that it's advantageous to, uh, make this switch is because the, as it is now, the board had allocated it specifically for infrastructure, wastewater, which in this, in Cook County, knows a huge thing, it's a huge challenge for housing development. But there are other partners like the IRR, and we have some local tools that explicitly address infrastructure. Uh, what we don't have are funds that can be used for housing, but some of the things I mentioned in the letter, like, there's no good source for some of those funds. Um, that's the ex- expected sort of local match, uh, that would be put into a project. Um, so one of the things I'm really curious about and interested in doing is working with other partners who do explicitly fund infrastructure, like IRR, who are interested in, in doing some projects here. Um, obviously, they're assisting to solve the boats project, um, but there are other projects that I'm talking with them about. So use that, because you already have that infrastructure, and then use these funds for other costs associated to housing that we don't have anybody for, and frankly, very few people do. Just a quick example, I'm, I'm talking with the Lloyd K. Johnson Foundation about, um, match, doing some match dollar, uh, grant for the HRA. But the, the reality is those types of sources are very limited, um, the maximum grant that they would probably provide is twenty-five thousand. Uh, and that can be gone in half of a project very quickly. So, so the idea is, we can use this a little more flexibly to do, um, gap filling where other things don't account. So my ambition, of course, my aim is to find resources everywhere else. Uh, but where I can't find them, where they don't exist, or they're insufficient, this is a really nice tool to be able to match and plug that in. So that's my request to, to the board today for that reason, uh, if you have any questions for what that could look like, I'm more than happy to discuss the particulars.
And I'd also mention, we do have two members of this board, Commissioner Hawkins and Commissioner Sullivan, who are, Commissioner Hawkins is, is liaison to the HRA, Commissioner Sullivan is her alternate, so we do have a direct connection for, for the board, for the county board, to, to be involved in real time in the discussions that the HRAs have. in the discussions that the HRAs having about the use of these dollars. So there's, you know, ultimately, these are county dollars, but it's important that the county board be aware of how the dollars are going to be used. And so there's a really good framework in place for that.
Yeah, just one more thing, Commissioner, on that note, the HRA board adopted a procurement and spending policy, basically a spending threshold policy. So, you know, anything above $2,000 per temple is going to have to get board approval. So, so I don't get too, you know, cowboy freewheeling going. But, so, so obviously the point being that there's definitely the board involvement and oversight and the Commissioners here are involved in those conversations that are being made. So there's definitely still a collaborative environment with these funds.
I would say in addition to the collaboration, it's just so wonderful to have some flexibility with funds. Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, I just would like to thank Jason for his work. And I think we have a really good HRA board. I am impressed with the level of thought and detail by the members, the discussions that are had. So I feel pretty confident that I am excited that this HRA board is going to have, because we've talked about how are we going to do this? We have no money. So I'm excited that we can do this and maybe get some projects really happening instead of just talking about them. So, and I have confidence in the board making good decisions about how this money gets used and not just stop in one season.
And I was just going to say, we are really lucky to have Jason's expertise leading these efforts because he's done this work for, for over 10 years and he has the experience, he knows how, how the funding pieces fit together. And that gives us a huge advantage in figuring out figures of progress. But it gives Cook County a huge advantage in trying to figure out the housing.
And just for maybe a little bit of I can't think of the word that escapes me. I had any more coffee, it's one. But maybe a dose of reality, pragmatism. This is a significant chunk of the ARPA funds that kind of received that I'm not, one, I'm not blind to that. I'm very appreciative of the forethought of the board to dedicate it for that purpose. It's, I can't go anywhere without somebody mentioning housing is a problem. Literally nowhere can I talk to somebody that comes up, which is affirming and also daunting. But the reality is, you know, this could be gone and again, even this whole amount of tap project. So I just want to, maybe, maybe there's some expectation management and also just being totally transparent. My ambition is to leverage this as much as possible for other funds. But this, this is the cost of, by way of example, this is less than the cost of the septic system for the Make Grant Road. So, and that was for 10 to 15 houses. So it is a huge opportunity to be able to have some flexibility to leverage, but also recognizing that it's, you know, a piece of the pie and then we have to use that to look at everything else.
Other questions here, Commissioner Mills?
Do we need to amend that budget then, or can we just assign the funds?
We, we do not. No, the, the request this morning is simply to approve the sub-grant of these funds to the HRA. There is, we're still working out, what I liked this morning is the board's agreement that that's how we want the, we want the process to go. In terms of the actual sub-recipient agreement, we're still, we're still exploring exactly what is needed to effect that transfer, but, but I just like the board's agreement principle that we believe the HRA is the best entity to determine how to spend these funds.
And if the board does agree to that or prove that, my, I have a board meeting tomorrow and I will be bringing the resolution, no, I'm sorry. But it's today, a week from tomorrow, the pack is going out tomorrow. And I'll be bringing the resolution to the board to the same effect. And then the Administrator and I are going to have to work to figure out the exact mechanics of what needs to happen. But again, with the flexibility built into the final rule, I think that we have a couple of options.
And so getting back to the sub-recipient agreement, that's the, the tool that we need to be able to transfer the funds to the HRA. The, the vote today would just be agreement that we're doing that. And then the chair could sign that agreement when we, when we complete it. Brady, I don't know if you have anything you want to add in terms of the process?
Yeah, just, we reached out to our audit team and they worked on these with cities, not with the counties. But, so he hasn't had time before this meeting, but he'll get back to me with what he's following. He doesn't see any, no obstacles. So this is all manageable, accounting, object standpoint, so it's just fine.
And just to piggyback on our powers comment, I reached out to our HRA attorney and financial consultant to just make sure that I had my head out straight. And I have already drafted a template sub-recipient agreement if we need to use one. And they concur with what you've heard, that that's not really a problem, it's just how we want to bring it up.
Commissioner Hawkins? I'm just wondering, does that agreement include yearly reporting to us as a board?
Certainly. Yeah, it's, it's, so the, sorry. The agreement's going to stipulate the terms of the transfer, which is like has to be used for these purposes. As well as making it clear that this isn't going to be by inclination, as the board sees otherwise, is to say that this, these funds will be used directly for project-related costs, not, right? Administrative costs associated with the HRA. I want these to be hard costs or predevelopments costs that we can show, look at this as a result of these funds. And there's going to be annual reporting for, and actually, the ARPA requires that regardless. Here the, here, it's used for this purpose, for example, for use for pre-development dollars, there's not really any reporting to do except for saying this is what was spent on. But if it was used to help fund a housing project that had low to moderate income units, then I will be reporting every year on those units, which I would do anyway, as a trade. Yes, that's your question.
We'll, we'll be working closely with the HRAs, things move forward and at any point if the board wants an update, easily.
Yep, and you'll get updates at the meetings as well.
The people watch.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
No, I think actually it's probably not a bad idea for us to think about periodic updates, whether it's every six months or maybe every four months for you to come and report to the county board and just what's going on. That kind of information sharing will be valuable to the board members and also to the public.
I'm happy to, in fact, I can give a little mini update now, if that's okay. So you may know that I talked to the Grand Ray State Council about a parcel, but they are afternoon-shaped parcel. And sorry, Commissioner, you're going to hear more about this next week as well, so you can tune out next week. The, the council has agreed preliminarily to provide a property to the HRA explicitly for housing development, which is tremendous asset because there aren't a lot of places, especially that size. And we're working on a couple of other opportunities too. But in order to transfer the property, they have a title commitment has to be done, an altar survey has to be done. I got a quote for the altar survey, it's about $15,000. So you can see like, there's a bit of a chicken and egg situation. We don't have the budget built in this year, we could maybe do one of those, as long as we have zero office expenses for the rest of the year. So one of the reasons those funds are really useful is because we can, for example, do the altar survey legally describe the property the city's providing, so that we can bring it to council for them to approve providing. That's, then the HRA has 12 acres approximately to work with for housing development. And I've already got two developers that I've talked with about that property, but the first step is to get it available to, to build something out. So those are the kinds of things that I have in mind to leverage these kinds of, these funds to set the table for developments and I'm looking at infrastructure costs and I've already talked to IRR about it. So that's just an example of like, out of the gates, you know, in two weeks I could spend $15,000 to get a survey done. Until it be deployed as soon as I can get the documents lined up to get things moving.
Commissioner Mills?
I would make the motion to approve this sub-grant.
Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, we have a motion of support and a group of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Thank you, board, very much.
Thank you.
Call it done, any time to a board meeting, if you want more board meetings, we need them serviced at 3 o'clock.
Right, moving on to the next item. This is an addendum to the memorandum of agreement that we have with University of Minnesota Extension Program, which, which governs the work activities of the Extension Educator and Community Center Director Sarah Waddle, who by the way, has been doing fantastic work over there. There was, when we first created the MOA, there was concern about grant writing. As you all know, when Diane Booth was in the role, she applied for a lot of small grants to do projects and programs around the community center. There was discussion initially that the university, all of that grant writing and administration would have to go through the university and we have indirect costs that we go to it. So basically, the county would not receive the full benefit of those grant dollars. And so there was concern about that and so we, we decided that, you know, for any grant proposals that Sarah is going to write for the community center, for example, enhancements to the skating rink, community garden, what have you. Those would be, the county would be the recipient of those grant dollars. They would not go through the university and we would receive the full benefit of those grants. For any grants that would be applied for specifically for extension programs, those would go through the university, which in my mind makes perfect sense. And so that, that is what this addendum is about. I'm very comfortable that it's, I really trust the county to, to approve this and so I would sit for any questions.
I really like the idea of keeping money here. Not that I don't support the University of Minnesota, but I like the idea of those kinds of things.
The movement, Chair?
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills, is there? Thank you, Commissioner Starling. We have a motion of support and a group of discussion. All in favor? Opposed, motion against?
All righty. Moving on to the next item, at our last meeting two weeks ago, there was a request to, to provide more information on a couple of line items in this departmental budget. Those are, let's see, dues and subscriptions and then also contract professional services, frankly. Yeah, so, so we did get that additional detail, that is part of your board packet. There's also a request to see organizational chart with FTE counts, that stands for full-time equivalent. And that just basically shows what our staffing levels are across the organization. So that's also in the packet. And so there may be questions that you have after reviewing that. And so I tried to answer those today. I can't promise I can answer everything, but if not, we'll certainly get additional information. One other thing I'll say, we are working to refine the budget. And I will have an updated version of that document on next, on the next business session.
And I just appreciated that organizational chart. I'm a person that likes a visual and it's very, very
And I should shout out Leah Exstrom for doing that. I was going to do it myself and she volunteered and I, I said, twist my arm.
That's great, Commissioner Mills?
I was just wondering if any of us printed it out and cut it, pasted it together?
I was thinking of that. I put it on my big screen rather than
Oh, oh, does it, does it automatically?
Yeah, you can, you can adjust it down.
Oh, interesting.
I made my own. But, oh, it's, it's just so helpful to be able to see it in that fashion.
Yeah, I would also just, and this is, this is getting ahead of ourselves, absolutely, but just want to throw this out there that as we're talking about services that our community is needing and where we're, we're lacking, the lowest hanging fruit is filling out part-time to full-time. That's kind of the most cost-effective way to, to meet those needs. So I don't know if that's at all possible as we're looking at this going forward. And again, this is way ahead of ourselves, but I just wanted to throw that out there as something for us to keep in the back of our minds.
Other questions? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you for doing this, I appreciate it. I have just started to kind of wrap my head around the information, so I want to reserve my right to talk to you about it later. Thank you. But I do appreciate gathering that information, it's very helpful.
Then if, again, that was just an information item and I do welcome questions after the fact if you're looking through it and additional questions come to mind. Wanted to share a couple of things. Number one is we are today meeting the courtroom because we are having an election and the Commissioners' room is in use. That will also be the case for the first business meeting in November. And so I just wanted to make you all aware of that. We, I talked to Molly about whether the board actually has to vote ordinarily when you change the venue. There has to be a vote in advance and that, that change in venue has to be publicized. However, since we are in the same building, Molly thought that it would be sufficient simply to put signs on the door saying that we are holding the meeting in the courtroom. And so that's, that's what we've done today and I see April has
Just for clarification, according to court administration, there is a trial that week, so this one would not be available.
Oh. So we'll just have a meeting out on the lawn and it'll be So the other, so the, the plan B would be ordinarily the community center, but that's also a home place. So we're going to have to figure out a different location.
City hall might be an option for us, if you step in fast. Or higher end.
We could do that. Or it's got walls in the root.
We have three in the west end.
Or a different
Well, at least we have time to get this figured out.
Yeah, and Brady has pointed out, we could do it on a different date as well. So we're going to, we're going to nail down what, what we think the best alternative is and come back to you at a future meeting with the request to either change the date or
That's good.
Another thing I wanted to mention related to housing is that I did recently meet with Jason Hale and Chris Lindholm, Superintendent of I.S.D. 166, to talk about possible opportunities for collaboration on housing. And there are some really interesting ones, the details of which I'm not ready to share at this point. But just wanted to let you know that those conversations are going on. Generally speaking, the school district that's had some parcels north of the Compton Trail here in town that could potentially, there, it's already planted and would be ready for development, the curb cuts are already in, so there could be a road put in. But there, there's a lot that would have to happen, that would more than eat up the 500 and whatever, $1,000 that you all just agreed to sub-grant to the HRA. But anyway, the, the, so, so we're exploring the possibility of collaborating with them. Part of it could involve the counties either selling to the school district or leasing space for the district to have a softball diamond up here. Currently, there's a baseball diamond that the boys use on the school campus. The girls, when they play softball, have to go down to the red park. And so that's, that's something that the superintendent would like to address. And county may have a role in making some land available to accommodate that. So the Superintendent Lindholm has prized his board that we're starting these conversations. We're at the very beginning of the process, but as that moves forward, that will certainly keep you all updated. It presents some really interesting possibilities for, for us as a county and to, to address the housing issue. Those, those are the biggies.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Man, Chair, and thank you, Administrator Yorki. I was just, I don't know if we've talked about this before, but in your conversations with Superintendent Lindholm, I hope that you can at some point keep in the back of your mind or share with him different programs that schools around the state have, such as in Proctor. It's a shop class where there is, I think, three it's a shop class where there is, I think, three, three adults, instructors slash contractors, and the kids build the home, sell the home. And the district gets the proceeds there and continues funding that program. And there's a new shop teacher at the high school, who moves as a contractor. And I'm hopeful that this type of program could be developed. I think there's a lot of skills to be had by a lot of our students, and it would just help our community with housing, and it'd help the school district with funding, so.
I appreciate your mentioning that. It's, it is well-known that that's part of the problem, right? It's not just that we don't have enough housing, but we don't have enough people to build houses.
Right, exactly.
And learning those trades is super important. And it'd be great if that could be integrated into our efforts to get more housing built. So, I really appreciate that point, and I'm sure we'll have more conversations about it.
Yeah, that's a, a great thought. I know Hutchinson Public Schools also did the same thing, and they had huge success with that. They built one house every year. Employee concerns or commissioner concerns and updates? I would just like to share, if you would, pencil in that second weekend of October, there's going to be a program up at Grant Portage. The racial equity group is working on a calendar of events and activities for our community that are education-oriented. And so, that second weekend of October will be at Grant Portage, and it'll be about addressing racial equity in the county. And it'll be a celebration of the work that's been done, and introducing the same people that have been involved in that process, and acknowledging what we continue to need to work on, kind of continuing inequities and moral imperatives. And Lieutenant Governor Peggy Klaton will be speaking at that event. So, we'll have more details coming, but that's, every time we meet, we've met twice in the last seven days, more details are coming forward, so we'll keep going and talking about that. Any other options?
Thank you. Well, I'll just mention that being part of the Extension Board, Ryan has sent out an invitation. Usually, over the last couple of years, they've not had these meetings, but they're down in St. Paul at the university campus on August 25th. And it's an opportunity to meet with everyone around the state. And then, at a luncheon, and then in the afternoon, we go over and visit the 4-H building. So, I plan on attending that, which would be like a couple of nights. So, I'll get more information, Dave, about that, and then from Ryan, so.
Commissioner Mills?
I'll, I'll share this, I'm sure at the PHHS board meeting, it's, well, maybe not tomorrow, it's but the regular one. But I had a CHP board meeting yesterday in Virginia, and we have our, our infrastructure grants position filled, or actually, two of them. That's very exciting. The second one, I believe, was the Communications Coordinator, and it's a resident from Cook County, who will be working remotely for that, and so that's very exciting. I put a little plug in there, because NEH keeps telling the CHP that this is an experimental grant. This is to try to envision what the future of public health can look like, and they want mistakes to be made, they want us to try things. And so, you know, start brainstorming and come up with some, some wild ideas. And I, of course, am playing that for childcare, thinking that, that there's a lot of opportunity, both locally and regionally, for us to demonstrate potential solutions there. So, I don't know how much funding would be available, but I'm fishing for that. Just thought it was very exciting to get that kind of encouragement for thinking outside the box and trying, trying to find the solutions.
Well, we have some meetings coming up, as Commissioner Mills mentioned. We have our PHHS special meeting in the board at 1 o'clock, and that's for the purpose of looking at childcare, go to sculpt and budget for that program. And then, we have community leadership, which is in the evening, 5:30 on Thursday, August 11. We have some respondents, just the lodging tax comparison. And then, we do have some recognition of staffs, an August anniversary. So, we have Jacob Backer in Highway Department, two years. Melissa Viseras, PHHS, one year. Josh Dix in the Highway Department, two years, and also a two years. Robbie Cass, our highway engineer. We have Wes Higgins from the Highway Department, nine years, I can actually remember when he got his job. That's with his mom, she's so excited, we should have really good news. Heather Johnson at the Recycling Center, one year, and Andrea Oris with PHHS, also, one. And our milestone anniversary is Grace Bouchard with PHHS, 15 years, 15 years of great service. Anything else for the board? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Commissioner Starling, is there support?
Word?
We have lots of support. All right, all in favor?
I am.
Oppose, motion against? Thank you all so much.